Welcome everyone, it's around about 1pm. I'll declare the meeting open, welcome everyone, kia ora stata. And can I also begin by welcoming Lauren McDonald, who is with us for the first time. Turns out that I used to work with her mother, so I've been completely outed here. There are no work with, I said, there are no secrets. There is no public forum, and we have apologies from councillor Loviso and councillor Staines, and councillor Gary for early departure from the meeting and subsequent later arrival at councillor Hawkins' meeting. I'll move that those apologies be sustained, thank you councillor Lord. Those in favour please say aye against no. And can I also thank colleagues for accommodating the request to change the order of the meetings so that Ms Graham and I can attend other meetings that will probably start while councillor Hawkins is working through that agenda. I'll move item three, that the committee confirms the agenda with the following alteration, namely in respect of standing order 2.1, that option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments. Can I have a second to please? Councillor Newell, those in favour please say aye against no, that's agreed. And I'll note that we note, there are no changes to the elected members' register of interest, and confirm the proposed management plan for that register, seconded by councillor O'Malley, thank you, those in favour please say aye against no, that's agreed. Ms Graham?
If I could just note that my register has been updated to show that I hold the delegations for mediating the 2GP.
Thank you, well, I'll move that that is amended and noted accordingly. Seconded councillor Wilson, those in favour please say aye against no, that's agreed. To the Part A reports, Mr Stocker and Dr Johnson, would you grace us with your presence, please? Okay, Part A, item five, housing capacity assessment for Dunedin City. Would you like to make some introductory comments about this report, Dr Johnson, Mr Stocker?
I'll just start by noting that this report and the following, the report that follows are related. So Nathan will be available to answer questions on the monitoring, but any questions related to the response to the monitoring will be dealt with in the second report.
So that's all, no other comments?
I'm happy to give a brief overview of the report if that's desired, please. So this is a result of relatively new requirements under the National Policy Statement on Urban Development Capacity. Pretty much, we're required to make sure that we have 10 years' worth of zoned capacity and that we've identified capacity for 30 years' worth of growth. There's a fair bit to the methodology behind this, which is a result of some national discussions, but the key results are that we have enough capacity in the 2GP for five years' worth of growth, and therefore we need to enable some further capacity, and that's something which is being worked on and which Anna can discuss.
Thank you. Questions councillors? Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a question around some of the assumptions in the working. So the capacity is based solely on what can be developed as a permitted activity, is that right?
Yes, that's right, that's the planned enabled capacity. There's also some tests around the economic feasibility and the practicality of those developments.
But it doesn't consider what may be economically feasible but require, have a restricted discretionary activity status for breach of performance standards, for example?
That's correct, yep.
And in some cases, a decision, I don't know if it's a decision of staff in doing this, or it's set down as part of the methodology, but a decision was made to not even go as high as what the permitted activity was because it's not a housing, they're not housing typologies currently being developed, there's comment around the three-storey unit which hasn't been pursued really as part of this.
Yeah, the economic feasibility tests respond to that to a certain degree. For every site, it tests about a dozen different development options with different yields and different household sizes, and picks out the one which is the most profitable. So that's meant to reflect the fact that developers won't always build to the full capacity on sites.
And there's no inclusion of potential, because it's difficult to measure, potential residential development in the CBD and suburban centres?
No, it does include mixed-use zones, commercial and mixed-use zones as well. It's got a slightly different methodology in terms of assessing the economic feasibility, but it is in there as well.
Okay. And just lastly, no, two more questions, sorry. In future reporting, because this has to be done annually?
Under the 2GP it does, yes.
Under the 2GP it does?
Under the NPS it's every three years, but in the 2GP we'll say we'll update it annually to be more responsive.
Right, and that will take account of any, not just theoretical development, but any proposed or consented residential development that has been filed in the interim?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And just have a concern, and this was flagged the last time we did this, and is noted in the report around, and it's difficult to read commentary around the affordability of housing for purchase or rent being stable or improving, because that doesn't seem to gel with much of the feedback we're getting in many other fora. And there are questions raised in the report around how rigorous that methodology is. Do you want to speak, can you elaborate on what your concerns are around that methodology?
So is your question around future feasibility and it being based on present-day house prices?
No, there's, sorry, there's discussion, briefly, discussion around housing affordability as a measure, and it talks about how in Dunedin that is stable or improving, which is interesting, and it raised eyebrows the first time it came through this reporting measure as well. And then there's further comment around how that methodology may require refinement if it's to become a tier-one statistic.
Yeah, that was in my previous monitoring report, and that indicator was developed by the Ministry of Business Innovation and Employment rather than ourselves, it was reflecting their methodology. It is a new indicator and it is undergoing refinements and it is raising eyebrows throughout the country. I didn't think it was actually in this report per se. In this report, there is a requirement that all the capacity, even future capacity, is assessed under current-day construction costs and house prices, and that is a result of making it quite conservative, because it doesn't take into account that developments will become more feasible over time. The housing affordability question's slightly different, I think.
So just to be clear, that hasn't been updated since its inclusion in that first monitoring report? So it's the same?
I think it probably will have been updated, the next monitoring report will be coming out in March, and I was thinking about whether it's useful having that indicator in based on how much uncertainty there is around its trustworthiness.
Great, thank you. I'm happy to move.
Thank you councillor Wilson.
Thank you. Just taking up on the councillor Hawkins' second question about the affordability of development and the yield. Are there any steps, and I don't know that this is your area of expertise or you've thought about it, are there any steps that you'd recommend that the council consider in order to ensure that the yield is higher, so that developers are incentivised, so as to get a higher yield on the sites that exist, whether it is capacity?
Yeah, that's something which you could consider under plan change too, I think maybe Anna might be better to respond to that.
Later, okay.
Later, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Vandervass?
You said that it's a relatively new requirement to consider impacts on planning frameworks. Was there not a requirement previous to the NPS UDC to consider impacts on development market?
I think it probably would be included in the RMA's consideration of effects. The NPS just goes a bit further in considering how exactly we should consider these impacts.
So it's actually, when you say it's a relatively new requirement, in fact, it was always something to be considered, but it has now become sort of something that you have to do?
That's correct, it's kind of been prioritised and refined somewhat.
Okay. And when you said it's been brought in recently, are you referring to the release of the NPS UDC in November of 2016?
Yes, and then subsequently when we were made a medium density, sorry, a medium growth count, so about a year later, is when most of the requirements started applying to Dunedin.
And were the commissioners on the second generation plan made aware of the NPS UDC in November of 2016, or was it sometime later?
The commissioners were aware of the NPS UDC as soon as it came into force.
Which was November 2016?
Yes, they were.
Okay. It goes on further here to say that the NPS UDC requires councils to provide an additional margin of capacity over and above demand. Given that you perhaps estimate demand as being X, does it give you any idea of what kind of margin, 10% more, 20%? Does it actually specify anything more than greater than?
It does, so the default kind of values, if you will, are an additional 20% over the short and medium term, an additional 15% over the long term. And then it also encourages councils to, through their monitoring, identify whether those values are appropriate to that particular local area, and that's certainly something we'll be doing over the next few years.
Right, and all of that was clear already in 2016?
Councillor Vandervass, the decision on the urban land supply outlines in quite a bit of detail how the Haring's Panel addressed the NPS, so it's available on the website, and I'm happy to send that to you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Lord?
Yeah, I just had a question about the housing capacity assessment, and reading the figures, it's, well, I'm just wondering if you've got an opinion on, at the moment, I believe there's a very large percentage of perhaps elderly people living alone in their houses, and do we take any account for how that may change in the future? Now, I know we're getting a tsunami of elderly people coming on as we all get older, but do we know if that will change the dynamic, as in when elderly people move on to greener pastures, so to speak, that there might be families take up their home and it could actually mean that there is an upcoming, not oversupply, but do we have any data about that? Is that all factored in when we do our assessments?
Just to a degree, the demand assessment does include the demographics of our increasing populations and the fact that...
Sorry, it does?
It does, so all of our projected increase in population are in the 65-plus age group, and all of our projected household growth is in one- and two-bedroom houses. We've also done some housing preferences work quite a while in the past, which looks at where different demographics would like to live in. So, you know, it shows that whilst all groups mostly like standalone houses, older age cohorts are more likely to prefer townhouses and other similar developments, and that's fed into the type of dwellings that we would like to see, and that's fed into this report.
Yep. And the second question is, do we have any data on, or any, perhaps I could, I mean, you're a professional, so your opinion would be valuable, but is there a possibility that if we were able to make more land available for housing, that we could increase it quite substantially? We would be able to actually lower the price, therefore help everyone right across the board, is that a possibility?
It's getting into the realm of an economist rather than a planner, I think, they're very, very complex markets.
Yep. So you don't want to hazard a guess. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. An apology's a couple more that I hadn't thought of. There's no discussion in this paper around the designation of the city as a former refugee resettlement location, which I think is pertinent in that they are largely family units being resettled here to the tune of 30 to 40 per year, which if that trend continues, is a considerable demand on typologies that aren't one- or two-bedroom units. So is that something that we should be considering?
I do think it's something we should be considering, I'd have to look into how that's fed into our population projections that we've had developed. The population projections are what's kind of fed into this, and I would have thought that kind of issue would feed into those projections in terms of the number of new residents and their demographics.
In terms of that, is that still problematic, given the issues that we had around our most recent census? In terms of what reliable projections can look like?
Yeah, it's a very big issue, and we've recently had, there's been new developments which have suggested that our population estimates may not be entirely accurate, and they never are entirely accurate, their estimates, and we're eagerly awaiting the census results, which will at least provide some more accurate data.
And there's a tension between the decisions in the second generation plan around looking at the residential catchment as a whole, and this report which breaks it down into smaller areas. Is one a preferred methodology under the MFE framework, or, I mean, is the 2GP wrong to do that under this assessment? Do we have to consider both of those things, or have we chosen to?
I wouldn't comment on the 2GP aspect of that question, but the NPS requires us to look at demand and supply by location. It doesn't talk about, and I think the guidance does talk about the fact that these aren't black-and-white things, you can't say the demand for North East Valley is X and the demand for Oberho is Y, because there's so much cross-boundary, you know, issues there, people might live here or there, so it's very hard to say we need to supply this much capacity in these different locations, which is why I think the citywide scope aspect is quite relevant.
Thank you. Councillor Wiley?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Question, just reading this report and just going to get clarification. So we're looking at, we need 2,200 new dwellings to basically meet, oh, sorry, the DCC estimates there was a capacity for 2,200 new dwellings within Dunedin urban area. Is that currently, or is that under the 2GP being released?
It's based on the decisions version of the 2GP, it appears in there.
Okay. And that's saying that if the decision of the 2GP as it is right now, that there'd be capacity for 2,200 new housing platforms?
Well, 2,200 more units, yeah.
More units? So for example, in certain areas where there's allowed infilling of houses, if every one of those areas took on infilling of all the areas?
Yeah, subject to those feasibility tests and what's on the sites currently, but yes.
So I guess in my mind, what I'm trying to get clarification is that that's essentially the best-case scenario right at this moment, that we would have 2,200?
I think the purpose of the assessment is to consider our capacity and what we're enabling, there's a lot of other factors which influence how much housing development we see. There's the development sector, there's the construction sector, these have limitations, there's the economic sector. 2,200 is our current capacity, about what's enabled under the 2GP, in which we might reasonably expect to see, factoring in those economic considerations. I wouldn't say it's a best-case scenario, it's just our best estimate.
Okay. Go on, thank you.
Councillor Vandervass?
For 2,200 new dwellings, are they all urban?
They're all within our defined urban area, how you define urban is a tricky question.
Okay. Do you have any reliable data on the demand for lifestyle builds in near-city rural areas?
We do have project, population projections in those areas, which are a bit different to demand. We've largely not looked at the larger kind of lifestyle blocks and rural blocks, we've mainly looked at the more urban residential land uses.
So if there was quite a demand for small lifestyle blocks near the city, that wouldn't have been caught by your data at this point?
Not necessarily.
Thank you.
Sir, may I ask, I'd just add to that, the NPS doesn't require the same assessment for rural residential lifestyle living, it only requires it for urban residential living, so it's not a requirement under the NPS to provide for rural residential housing options.
So are you and the 2GP then only focused on what is a requirement? Is that your suggestion you're making? You're only going to do what's required?
Sorry, I'm just commenting on the NPS's monitoring requirements, which is the subject of Nathan's report.
All right, which is what's under discussion. Councillor Wilson?
Apologies, and I think I'd misread the CMU component, which councillor Hawkins also asked a question about. So while residential is, I think, provided for in the CMU with performance standards, and therefore, I'm intrigued how you've counted it in, if it's, if it requires performance standards, because I thought anything that was as of right that was provided for in the count?
The land use component of residential land uses in most CMU zones is permitted.
Yeah.
There are some assumptions in there around how you allocate floor space to residential purposes compared to retail and other commercial purposes.
Okay. And just getting it right in my head, that I just want to ensure that I've read it right. So in the CMU areas, you've only counted as feasible or likely to happen, buildings that are either vacant but they have to be built, if you've got a bare site, have you added that in or not? Because that's why I was getting confused in reading it.
Okay, I've got you. Well, there are two components, there's comprehensive redevelopment of buildings where sites are very underutilized, and the value of the building is very low compared to the value of the land, and there are some assumptions that those have capacity for redevelopment. The second aspect is vacant sites where they're not legally attached to an existing land use, or we haven't considered, say, the countdown car park, because that's vacant, but it's associated with, countdown is unlikely to be developed, but where sites are fully vacant and not linked to another land use, then they have been counted as capacity.
So the fact that you could put car parking underneath a residential building, say on the countdown site, doesn't, it's not been counted because you don't consider that it's feasible? Or is it unlike, I'm just trying to see how conservative you've been, you've acknowledged you've been conservative?
It is a conservative approach, yes, that's right.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Wiley?
Okay, thank you. So I'm just following up, and I've just pulled up a Utaqua Daily Times article from November, where it talked about the rezoning of 190 hectares for up to 1,200 new homes, now included. So you're taking into the fact of the 2,200 dwellings were coming from essentially the 1,200 new homes?
Those two assessments have different methodologies. The 2GP assessment was done through its developments and is consistent with the assessment which went into the 2GP decisions. The NPS methodology and assessments is, kind of starts afresh with a new methodology that meets guidelines, national guidance. So they're not entirely comparable, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Now I'm getting more confused. So, but based on the 190 hectares that was included in the assessment, that we have capacity for 2,200 new dwellings?
Yes, so that land would be included in this assessment.
Okay. So, just so from my, again, visual in my mind, so when I look at the Caustophine location, which is Sinclair Golf Club, they're talking 320 homes?
Yep, so for that particular site, and where sites are slightly unique like that, we've made some manual tweaks, so in that case, I went in there and tweaked the result from the capacity model to reflect that we wouldn't actually expect the entire golf course to be redeveloped. And that's on the side of things, of looking at what's feasible and realistic, not just what do we technically have capacity for. So there are some sites where, for instance, we know that a development is likely, or that a development is unlikely, that we've manually adjusted it to reflect what we know.
So can you give me an indication what you manually adjusted it to?
I would need to have a look, it was pretty low, I think it was about 10% of the total capacity, based on the fact that they might just develop, in that case, a small portion of their land, not all of it. I don't have the number in my head, so...
So were there other areas where you did the opposite, where you sort of said, okay, we've underestimated and we can add more?
Where we have recent developments which we know are likely to go ahead, or which have had resource consent applied for, thinking like the Grange and Muskel, we have manually adjusted it to reflect that development there is likely, and we know the rough yield of what that would be.
Okay. Has, I guess, the next step would be to have discussions with various landowners and developers about capacity in other areas?
Yeah, it would be good to talk to developers and landowners about their intentions, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Alder?
Okay. Just a question around that 2,000 and 200 capacity for units, they don't need to be What is the difference between, at the moment, capacity and actual availability of those sites?
Availability in terms of whether they're on the market and that sort of thing?
Yes, or, yeah.
Yeah, so that's total capacity, so in a lot of cases, landowners might own a site which has significant capacity and have no interest in developing it.
I have one of those sites.
And that's where that margin comes into it, the additional 20% in the short and medium term and 15% in the long term, to reflect that not all of our capacity is actually going to be developed.
So does that kind of diminish that number of 2,200? I mean, we've got capacity for 2,200, but in reality, how much will be available in reality?
Yeah, that's a good question and a very difficult one to ask, and I guess it goes back to the purpose of the assessment, which is purely about, from a planning perspective, are our planning documents being enabling enough? It doesn't look into all of those other issues around availability and developability.
Thank you.
All right, there appear to be none of the question, oh, councillor Hawkins, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman, just a question for the purposes of clarification, and it's about the relationship between the identified capacity and the greenfields land rezoned or enabled by the 2GP. The entire additional capacity enabled by the decisions version of the 2GP isn't limited to greenfields development, is it? It also includes allowances for greater density of development within the existing urban environment.
Correct, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's make progress with the motion. I'll move the motion that the council note the report, can I have a second to please? Councillor Hawkins, discussion. It appears to be none, not councillor Hawkins.
Well, thank you, Mr Chairman, just to touch on that difference a little bit more, there's been a lot of talk around the shortfall as identified in this report and the relationship it has to the provision of land that is required to meet that shortfall. But this isn't an assessment for urban land supply, this is an assessment of urban development capacity, and that is, that could involve the rezoning of land to enable residential development where it currently isn't. But it could also involve the allowance for or encouragement of greater density of development within the existing urban form. The challenges of urban sprawl are not insignificant for the city and for the council from an infrastructure point of view, it's incredibly expensive to put in that kind of work, and nor are the challenges particularly easygoing from a density point of view, in that you are up against the challenge of dealing with the expectations of the existing residents in those areas, and those are difficult conversations to have from a planning point of view, but the solution is never going to be freeing... But the solution is never going to be freeing up infinitely more land to meet demand. It needs to, it will always have to be a combination of those two conversations. And I think, and the easiest place to start in terms of doing this work is around supporting greater residential development in our inner-city area. It's where the existing infrastructure is to support this, for the capacity, for development capacity to be counted under this methodology. The infrastructure needs to be present or allowed for within the 10-year plan. And there aren't too many options currently. There's some work planned in Quake Valley and North East Valley, but the only existing area really where there is significant capacity to deal with that is in the inner city. And that also, encouraging that also supports the objectives and policies we have in the 2GP around supporting and encouraging a compact city and encouraging and supporting inner-city residential development. It feeds into work that we're doing around the central city plan, which will obviously be supported and enabled from a passive surveillance perspective, nothing else, for having a greater number of people living and existing in the central city area. And if we, if these are the objectives and policies that council has, then I think we need to take a more active role in trying to facilitate making those happen. We've done it with the encouragement of the adaptive use of heritage buildings for a number of purposes. We do it with supporting, and through the Heritage Fund and other rating mechanisms. We do it to support biodiversity outcomes on private land, and that's an item for discussion later in this agenda. I don't see why we wouldn't do it to support greater residential development in the inner city and in the suburban centres. So as a foreshadowing, a sequential motion to this, that the GSOs have, or the chairman is happy to accept it as an amendment, I'm happy for it to progress that way, that requests that, a report back to council looking at the ways that we could go about encouraging and incentivising that. And I've kept it fairly broad in that I don't want to be overly prescriptive. It could look like grants, it could look like rating mechanisms, it could look like a council working with private developers using public land. I'm fairly open as to what those options might be. But I do think that if we have these goals, we need to do what we can to work with the market to try and facilitate their happening. And, there it is, there. And I think, while I'm not going to withdraw from the following item, I don't have a view on the plan change processes proposed in the subsequent item on the agenda. I do, I thought it was helpful to phrase this in such a way that any work, should this be accepted by the committee, any work that's done along these lines is done in such a way that it can feed into those proposed plan change processes, should they proceed. Thank you.
And as mover, I'm quite happy to accept that. I think it's useful, and I'll address that in my writer reply. councillor Vandewith.
There's been a lot of mileage got out of the extraordinary infrastructure costs that you get when you try and extend the city boundaries. And in the past, this has been very true. Drainage, fowl sewer, electricity, all of these infrastructure requirements are extraordinarily expensive if you want to drag them into greenfield sites. However, I don't think there has really been enough acknowledgement of the new technologies now available that allow building in semi-rural or rural areas that have little or no infrastructure requirements. The reason being that, in many cases, water supply can be roof or spring. In many cases, no drainage or fowl sewer is required, since in these environments, modern septic tanks actually do a very, very good job. I'm actually putting in a gravity-fed one myself. That you don't even need electricity supply these days, because off-grid solar power is now very affordable, very reliable, no moving parts in it. All of these infrastructure requirements, which have been the basis of limiting any rural or semi-rural development, all those infrastructure requirements no longer apply. The only infrastructure requirement that does apply, that would be an impost, would be roading. And since there is an incredible network of roads near the DCC urban boundary or urban fence anyway, there is an enormous range of these roads, which could easily tolerate a lot more use without any substantial cost. I believe that there's a whole swathe of potential building platforms, which with suitable sightline restrictions, with suitable restrictions that they not be visible from public places or public roads, could actually supply a great deal of much-in-demand peripheral building places. The change in technology is the main reason that these kind of sections, if you like, for development are now much more affordable. And I believe there's actually a really strong demand for people to have these as well. The argument that you're going to burn more fossil fuels driving in and out of these properties, I can think of hundreds of them where they would be within 15 minutes of the centre of Dunedin, which is closer than Moskell or other places. And with electric cars now being available, there is no fossil fuel impact, there is no carbon footprint, because you can simply charge your car off your off-grid solar panels, which I'm already doing. So in terms of looking forward with the 2GP, and in terms of making the argument that councillor Hawkins has just made regarding the extraordinary infrastructure costs that are necessarily part of anything that goes outside of the boundary, I think we need to look again. Certainly, in terms of conventional greenfields, big sprawling developments, I agree, those kind of infrastructure costs are really, despite development contributions, not desirable, not really what we want to see. But in terms of new technology, independent semi-rural living, I think there's enormous potential around Dunedin. And I think that if it was managed well, it could be a win-win for everybody, as well as providing a lot of much-needed land. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wilson.
Thank you for that amendment. I'm happy to support this. I had the pleasure of sitting, as you will know, on 2GP where this was well and truly considered, given the scope limitations we had in the hearings. But I just, I, for those that had the pleasure of going and listening to the presenter last night on parking, where he gave the analogy that a city centre and CBD are very like a jar with rocks in it, there's plenty of sand to fill up, rather than sprawling. And it was a very good analogy that he gave. And the vibrancy and what it did for the city at a strategic level, in light of a whole lot of other things, was very refreshing to hear and the experiences that he'd seen all over the world about cities rejuvenating through clever planning and committing to people walking and committing to infill was interesting. So I'm very happy to see what those considerations and options would be. And certainly, I think that the developers will welcome having those discussions that Mr Stoker referred to, to see if there is some stuff that can be done.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Wylie.
Thank you. Firstly, I just want to clarify something regarding a question I made earlier, and that was around the Sinclair Golf Club site, and that it was in part of the transitional zone and for 670 homes. So I just want to get that clarification on the table. The, I guess, the plus is that we're sitting here discussing growth versus decline, and that Dunedin has moved forward in a lot of ways, and that's what we are discussing, how to handle that growth, and where do we find the houses? So we're looking for 1,300 additional dwellings over the short term, and then over the following seven years, from 21 to 28, 1,550. Now, that's a huge undertaking for any city, especially one like ours. And there are a number of factors, as has already been discussed. But, so to me, it's all about working with the parties, and that's all parties. That's the landowners, the developers, the building companies, and anybody else who wants to participate in assisting us to build the houses. I just hope we do a better job of this in the government, and we can actually get on and do it and actually build the houses. Because, I think, what is 49 at the last count? The realities of the many houses that can be built, but we have to have the ability to do that, and that's including the trades. So with that, then, comes more demand. But in the meantime, we do have to be conscious of the rising house prices, the livability of our city, and the rising rents, where some people cannot even afford to live in our city. Thank you.
councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just wanted to pick up on my colleague councillor Wilson's comments. I'm certainly supporting the motion, and I'm really interested to see that report about the greater residential development of the CBD. Because one of the things we heard really clearly last evening was that, and we know this from anecdotal evidence, that people are choosing to come and live in our city because of the livability of the city. It's about the vibrancy of that inner city. It's about the developments like the warehouse precincts. The fact that people live in apartments, there's a vibrancy in the evenings here. And so he also said, as I understood it, that for cities or towns who simply develop by greenfield developments out on the outer perimeter, he showed a photo that was recognisable to all of us, of the type of thing he was talking about was a real killer to cities. And so with that in mind, I look forward to that report, and I'm certainly supporting the motion.
Thank you. No further speakers, I'll just make, oh, sorry, councillor Alder.
Hi, I'm, 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 I'm supporting this. I believe that we need to look at a number of solutions, and working together with landlords, developers, how we actually address that, and coming up with solutions of encouraging inner-city development. All those things are really, really important. On Friday, I had someone ring me, a small family ring me, and they said they're looking for a flat. They're getting shifted out of theirs because they just stayed in a student pack over the holidays. So I put out, does anyone know of a three-bedroom flat or house to rent? Have a family who will need to shift into a motel otherwise. I rang two huge landlords. They said, both landlords said they're putting people into motels because there's no capacity. So what I am saying is, this needs to be solved together with all the players, and both in a city and other options should all be considered, because in fact, the pressure is so, so hard. And because of the pressure, house prices are going up. Because of the pressure, rents are going up. And it makes it very difficult for our families to find a place to live here. So really support this, really support looking at other solutions, and everyone getting around the table and working together on it. And I totoku Andrew Wiley's comment that, you know, a lot of this is about growth, and that's a great thing. But growth has growing pains, and some of our people are wearing that pain right now. So thank you.
councillor Emile.
I'll support this, and as much as I don't want to vote against it. But I don't know if a report from staff is, I mean, I don't like burning any staff with, give us another report, versus, maybe we do need to be just interacting with those who would supply and potentially socialising our own thoughts on it as much as waiting for a staff report. I do believe and do agree in the idea that we need to bring more people into the CBD if we're going to grow the population in a way that's sustainable. I feel that probably we're addressing that with the upgrades of George Street and Princess Street, and that creating the environment is actually what then creates the desire, and then the desire creates the demand, and then the things get built. And if that is the relationship, then effectively, I'm not really sure what a report's going to give us, but I guess we'll get one and see what it says. Thanks.
Thank you. And I obviously am supporting it, and the only comment I'd make is that I think the opportunity that is just here for property owners and potential property owners in the central city and other centres is a very exciting opportunity. I guess it's crystallising for us all more and more as we start looking at George Street issues and other issues of the success of the sort we've seen in the warehouse precinct and elsewhere. Interestingly, the demand from people empty nesters in large houses was one of the many issues identified as part of the submissions process. Demand for smaller, central-city accommodation is one that we do need to address. And one can easily identify ways that this could be incentivised via the rating system or via our consenting processes or whatever. So I think this is an entirely positive move, and I'll put it. Those in favour, please say aye. Take them separately, please, certainly. We're voting on number one, those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, no. Any abstentions? That's unanimous. And number two, those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, no.
No, we call it, please.
Any abstentions? That's carried, thank you very much. Now, we'll go to item six, the initiation of changes to the second-generation plan. I'll ask Dr Johnson to make some comments about the paper. And then, before we go to questions, I'll be asking Ms Graham to make some comment to colleagues. Dr Johnson.
Right. Okay. This report asks the committee to approve the initiation of two different plan changes. The first plan change is to address minor issues in the district plan. This is quite a common practice, that as a result of making amendments to the plan through decisions, that inevitably, the odd mistake creeps in. So these are all minor issues that we would hope would be entirely uncontroversial and would, that plan change would proceed quite quickly. The second plan change is to respond to the report that you've just heard. The NPS requires council to initiate a response within 12 months of completing that assessment. We're wasting no time by asking you to initiate a plan change to respond to it immediately. This is just because we know that plan change processes take time. And inevitably, there's a range of views that come through submissions that need to be dealt with through hearings. And we think it makes sense to deal with it now. And also to enable those areas to be considered alongside the areas that will be considered through the appeals process in responding to Dunedin's urban development capacity needs.
Thank you. And can I note, please, that councillor Hall has withdrawn and removed himself from the room. He's a party in the appeals, and councillors Hawkins and Wilson have withdrawn. I haven't, but I don't propose to speak on the issue. So, for the questions off, first of all, Ms Graham.
Thank you, councillor. Just to clarify some advice that we have sent around councillors this morning, reminding you all that the 2GP is now in the appeal phase. There have been 83 appeals, some of which we expect to go to the Environment Court, and some we will manage through mediation. So with that in mind, we acknowledge there's a strong public interest in knowing how the appeal process is progressing. But we do need to be mindful that we are in an appeal situation. And so councillors should be considered when making comments that could potentially be used by a balance against the council's position.
Thank you. I think that's clear, and people have seen the text of those two sets of legal comments. Mia Cole.
Can I just ask a question on that? I take it that what you're identifying is a legal risk?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you. And as I say, the two opinions are in people's mail. If you have a look at those, I would expect that everyone would exercise due caution. Any further questions off Dr Johnson about either matter? councillor Lord.
Yeah, thank you, Enna. I'll call you Dr Johnson, seeing as I'm odd. Look, I've just got a question, and it really related to what councillor Hawkins said in his last summary and the last thing, but is it always... his last summary and the last thing, but is it always a given that, for example, a greenfield site would cost more because... I'm just sort of trying to work in my head, if you've got an area, for example, that was surrounded by residential, riding, whatever, and there was insufficient capacity to the current infrastructure, that could potentially cost a lot of money, perhaps tens of millions to upgrade to a level that you could maximise that site. Would that be correct?
I don't think I'm probably the best person to answer questions on infrastructure costs. In these plan processes, in the two GP and in these future plan changes, we get experts to provide evidence around all those matters and they do need to be considered, but we as planners don't do those types of experts' assessment. But certainly it is something that does get considered in any plan change processes.
So if there is an area that's completely surrounded perhaps by town, like as in an urban centre, like perhaps Mozgill or Port Chalmers or somewhere like that, and there's an area that someone's asked to be planned change to make it residential and they, council's recommendation is no, we don't have the infrastructure or whatever at this stage and so they leave it. I guess the point I'm trying to make is, will those places be the sort of places that you would be targeting in this report, looking at? Or what process do you go through to identify sites now? Because surely there was many people that were potentially unsatisfied with the recommendations of two GP. I mean, we've got people appealing that. So how do you go now to identify again the best places?
Councillor, you're actually starting to stray into the area of which I think we shouldn't traverse. Those matters were exhaustively canvassed as part of the hearings process and I think it's important that you don't and the staff aren't led into comments that will compromise the city's position as part of those appeals.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to ask is how do we make those decisions bearing in mind now?
Well, those decisions are obvious in the final decisions of the second generation plan of the commissioners and available for you to read. The reasons for the decisions and the constraints or not around any site, that's public information. Further questions? Councillor Aldo.
Just a question actually. What kind of things will maybe going to make the second generation plan easier to use?
Okay. Did you got a microphone?
Oh, sorry. How are you planning to make the second generation plan easier to use?
Well, in terms of implementing the second generation plan, we've taken a number of streams of work around communication. So we have done, we have a lot of information on the website, we've done sort of plain English summary documents, we have staff available to assist the resource consents team on their front counter advice services. We've run workshops and training for a range of stakeholder groups, sort of targeted towards different types of interest groups. We're doing more on request, so we're just organising another one for some of the planners, surveyors and developers in town who've now had a bit of time to become familiar with it, to ask some more specific questions. So we've done a range of things to support its implementation.
Thank you. That's great. And what about removing unintended consent requirements? So some around there.
Well, that was one of the principles that was used to develop the plan and it's certainly a requirement under the Act to consider the costs of regulation and that was something that the hearings panel considered carefully. And if you read their decisions, you'll find several topics where they, you know, they've made decisions and that's been one of the matters they've considered.
That's great.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thank you.
I'm just getting my head around the administrative thing. Basically, the current plan is filed and there's appeals on that and then you're asking to do an additional plan change set in response to the NPS on urban land supply and presumably that would then be open for appeal once those plan changes are in.
Yes. And one thing I possibly should have explained at the start is the terminology in the Resource Management Act varies depending on whether you are changing a plan that's operative or whether a plan that's still going through a process. And a plan change is where you change an aspect of the plan that's been settled and a variation is where you change an aspect of the plan that is still going through a process. Because each of these plan changes may, depending on when it's notified, involve possibly a bit of both, we've just used the terminology plan change for simplicity because by the time, you know, you notify it, that's when that terminology gets used differently.
Thank you. All right, I'll put the recommendations, one and two. Can I have a second, please? Councillor Newell, discussion. If it's to me now, I'll put it. Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, no. That's agreed. Thank you. Would someone fetch councillor Hall for us, please? Item seven, coastal hazards and community engagement. Mr Dyer. Mr Dyer and friends.
Yes, I'm off it with me, our Three Waters Planning Manager.
Would you like to make some introductory comments, Tom?
So really broadly, this report is, the purpose of it's to outline an approach to having a, I guess, conducting an assessment of the coastal environment on Ocean Beach, producing a set of technical options to manage that environment into the future with climate change and a whole bunch of other factors in mind and that also outlines an approach that we're suggesting in terms of how we engage with the community and just very keen to hear your feedback.
And in terms of the process, as we understand that this is largely modelled on the MFE model of community engagement around Hamwhana and Hawke's Bay and wider sense.
Yeah, it's correct. We've chosen to adapt some pieces early to meet the needs of what we see as the problem that's in front of us and the work we've got to do and to tailor the approach to our community as well.
All right. And the only other question I would have at this point is, can we find meaningful, accessible language to replace dynamic adaptive management?
Certainly.
In due course. Thank you very much. Questions councillors? Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. Tom, what role would the ORC play in this?
We've already started to partner with the ORC in terms of some of the lead-up modelling and data gathering and the coastal environment and we'd look to see that partnership grow over time, but still a little bit unclear.
Okay. Part of it, but actually, just part of the discussion in this report is talking about different aspects of protection of dunes and areas like that. And knowing that ORC does have a role to play in this, is do the residents of Dunedin have any chance of seeing the groins or the sticks being returned to Sinclair Beach, do you think?
That'll certainly be one of the options that's considered along the way and along this, throughout this approach.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions councillors? Everyone's happy. Would someone like to move the recommendation that we note the approach that will be used for Ocean Beach? Moved by the mayor, seconded by councillor Hall. Discussion. Councillor Vandervass.
I quite like dynamic adaptive management because it's short for dam.
This one, I use an acronym when you could avoid it. Any further comment? There doesn't appear to be any. Right of reply councillor Hall? No. Mr Mayor, sorry. Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, no. Well, you two got away lightly, thank you very much. That takes us to item eight. Dr Johnson's coming back. The review of the biodiversity fund. Would you like to make some introductory comments before we go to questions?
Excuse me, yes, certainly. The review's just, it's in response to a request in late 2017 to just review the biodiversity fund criteria and that request came from the Grant Subcommittee. And so we've essentially had a good look at our data from the fund and summarised the data hopefully in a reasonably sensible way in the report and then we've recommended just a few relatively minor changes to, I guess, the way we administer the fund in terms of the criteria and the rules around the fund.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions councillors? Councillor Vandervass.
Looking at attachment B, I think it looks pretty comprehensive, eligibility criteria all look good, but I'm wondering whether or not you intended to exclude funding salaries? Whether that was something that shouldn't be provided for? Whether you were going to aim, or whether you were going to aim more for projects rather than just funding people's salaries?
Sorry, which paragraph?
Sorry, it's attachment B. If we look at page eighty-two of our agenda, you've got eligibility criteria and there's a whole swathe of them there and they all seem very reasonable. I was just wondering whether or not it was the intent of the biodiversity fund under the following section where it says biodiversity fund does not provide grants for the following, whether you actually did intend providing grants for salaries?
No, we wouldn't intend to provide grants for salaries, as in wages salaries.
So either what?
As in salaries for people's wages salary.
So is it intended that these grants be for salaries or not?
No.
So if it's not intended, should it not be excluded? In previous grant criteria that I've been involved with, it came back a few years now, there was an issue that came up and that these grants, rather than for projects, they ended up being often used just as salaries and therefore a specific addition might be, for instance, the biodiversity fund does not provide grants for the following individual salaries.
Yeah, that would make sense to be sort of clear.
So you'd be happy for that to be included?
Personally, yes.
Mr Chair, should I put it forward as an amendment or just leave it to staff?
Well, if we've had the assurance that it hasn't been eligible, salaries haven't been eligible previously and that that's going to be included as an exclusion and you've given us that?
Yes.
More than happy.
Leave it at that.
Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you. It's on, this is on that same issue and I don't know if this complicates things further or not, but the grants that go to the biodiversity fund are only for up to fifty per cent of the project cost and the applicant is allowed to include their labour as work in kind as a contribution towards their fifty per cent. So my concern would be that if we removed labour costs from the grant criteria for things that could be applied for, the unintended consequence may be that their in-kind contribution would no longer also qualify as part of that criteria?
Yeah, I would distinguish salary from a labour contribution. Yeah. Would that be your intention?
That's fine, thank you.
Perhaps your additional note that you've just admitted to just got slightly larger to make that clear.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you. Further questions councillors? Councillor Stigman.
Thank you. Just regarding the wages, it's actually on page eighty-five there. It's rule number four, I think, and five, it actually covers it there.
Okay, thank you. We've doubly covered. No further questions? Moved councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Newell. Further discussion?
Only in moving the report, just to say thanks to the staff on behalf of the Grant Subcommittee who asked for it to be done and thank you for doing it as expediently as this. I think making clearer distinctions around the focus of this fund is entirely helpful and reasonable and focusing on getting projects done rather than, and not through any fault of the applicants, but just the vagaries of the policy as currently drafted has allowed it to expand to research projects and visitor facilities and other very noble projects, but as pointed out in the report, projects that have alternative revenue streams. And we certainly heard from plenty of submitters through the second generation district plan that there is a willingness on behalf of private landowners in the rural community to be more active, are already active and keen to be more active in maintaining and enhancing biodiversity outcomes on private land and this is one of the strongest current mechanisms that we have. So refocusing it towards that intended, the intended purpose of the fund is really helpful. So I look forward to seeing, and the additional advertising, we've seen there are some who are more than familiar with the application process and others in our community, so looking forward to seeing that be cast a little wider in the coming years. Thanks.
Thank you councillor. No further comment. I'll put it, those in favour, please say aye. Against, no. That's agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item nine, the reserves and beaches bylaw implementation issues. Mr West.
Thank you for the report. This has been an issue long in the gestation, but I think you're to be complimented for the progress that has been made. And it seems to me that the combination of gentle education and information for people as well as the capacity for the community to be involved in reporting clear breaches will develop and be supported and eventually the hammer will fall, but it appears that we are making some behavioural change as a result of the work that's been done. So well done from us on that. Would you like to make any comments about the issue before we go to questions, Rob?
No, probably the only comment I'd make councillor is that I think it's a work in progress. I think there's still a significant piece of work to be done to improve on where we're at even today. It's a subject of interest to our community and to your colleagues around the table. So yeah, it's a work in progress.
And thank you also for the quick response to the matter I raised yesterday in respect to Long Beach and the work you're doing with the community board in that area around reaching an agreeable, a uniform position on signage and information. Questions? Councillor Vandervass.
On the bottom of page eighty-nine, it refers to a bylaw not permitting vehicles on beaches unless they are used to launch or retrieve a vessel. Is a rowboat a vessel?
Is there what?
A rowing boat.
To launch a rowing boat?
Yeah. Just wondering what your definition of vessel is.
I can't answer that. To retrieve a vessel, a rowing boat in that instance, I would take as a vessel, yes.
Okay, what about a kayak?
I guess if there's a need for it to be launched by a vehicle due to its size, possibly, yes.
Okay, but not a Lilo?
I would think not.
Okay, thank you.
It might be dependent on the age and the frailty of the person taking the Lilo to the beach, I suppose.
That's entirely considerate and you're to be commended for it, thank you.
Councillor Aldo.
Hi. Thanks to the editor, but I was just wondering, anecdotally, has there been reports back that there's been an improvement?
I think it's patchy. I think there's anecdotal evidence in some areas that there has been an improvement. It's very difficult to gauge numbers and baseline figures as to whether there's an improvement or not. And I think there are some sites where we're seeing quite a bit of resistance to the bylaw, particularly with regard to vehicles on beaches.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thanks Rob for this report. I'm just going to number thirteen and going to the line where you talk about education. When we had a public forum presentation a while back, one of the members from the public pointed out that some of the car yards are still showing vehicles on beaches and we thought about approaching and I saw a TV ad the other day and it was zipping down the beach at like sixty K. So given that's inconsistent with our policies, have we thought about reaching out to those car distributors and saying, have you thought about what you're saying here when you show this?
I think that should be part of the consideration, yeah.
And then the follow up pointed out, a beach is a road by road laws, is it not?
Yes.
And do we have a speed limit in our bylaw?
Yes, we do. Do you want to know what it is?
Just now.
I've got the bylaw here, I can read it, but I don't know what it is off the top of my head. It'll be 10 or 20 or something. Further questions? No, then would someone like to move the recommendation that we note the report, councillor O'Malley, seconded councillor Lord, further discussion? Does none, those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. That takes us to the item 10, the planning and environment non-financial activity report for the quarter ended 31 December. Mr Blair and his backup team.
Hello, Mr Worthington. Greetings. Adrian, would you like to make any comments?
No, Mr Chair, happy to answer any questions though.
Thank you. Questions councillors? Everyone's happy. Everyone's delighted with your non-financial reporting. Do you have any comments about the issue I raised with you yesterday, admittedly not in this period, about delays on the customer service agency phone line?
Yes, Mr Chair, we've got a couple of FTEs not, we're a couple of FTEs down at the moment and we're under recruitment mode at the moment, so it shouldn't be too much long before we've got that under control.
Thank you. All right, I'll move the noting report. Have you got a question?
No, I was just going to make a comment on the phone.
Please do. Well, I'll move it and have I got a second, you want a second? Now I'll make your comment.
I was just going to say that I very much appreciate that in recent years, the information that you can get very quickly from ringing 4774000 has been very, very good. I have had some long waits recently, but recognise the reason for that, but hope that anybody that you do get to replace them will be as up to the minute and have all the information at their fingertips as the staff that we've had recently seem to have. It's certainly a marked improvement on what it used to be, say, 10 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? I'll put it, those in favour, please say aye. Against no. That's agreed and that takes us to the final item, any items to raise for consideration by the chair? There appear to be none on this occasion, in which case I'll close the meeting. Would you like a little break before you start, councillor Hawkins? Five minutes. Thank you very much. Enjoy your afternoon.